This government meeting is brought to you by Eastworks and our local cable subscribers.
Let us call to order the meeting of the Southampton Select Board for April 15th, 2025 at 6:00 PM. If we could start by saying the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, infinite, and just as strong.
All right. Do we have anybody here for citizen speak that is not on the agenda? Yeah, Robert?
Robert Floyd, College Highway Town Moderator. Town meeting's in three weeks. And the Town Moderator Annual Town Meeting Warrant Information Session is Thursday, April 24th, 7 o'clock in this room. And technically, your last day to sign the warrant is Monday, the 28th, but I understand you'll be posting the warrant sooner. I believe in honesty and integrity. It's important to me to be honest, but I'm not on board in all with one vote for the budget. I believe in dividing the question, as we've been doing for about 15 years now, and having everybody vote on a certain section of the budget. Once we finish that, there's no need to vote on the budget again. And it's worked. It's less chaotic. It gives people a feeling of more voice, and I believe that's very important.
Just to refresh our brains, what happens when a particular category or department gets voted down, for example? I don't know if we've had that, but what would happen?
Hypothetically, all the others would pass, and that would be voted down. Because we're doing each section individually. And when we do each section individually, there's no need to vote again on all the sections.
But then doesn't that mean we don't have a budget?
Yes.
Correct. So there's no budget?
Yeah.
So I assume we'd go to a 1/12 budget, because there'd be no way to hold another vote?
Right.
Yeah. So the citizens as a whole would be penalized?
Somebody was quick enough to make a motion, but that's...
Yeah.
Generally, that would go to a special town meeting. Thank you.
Anything else? Yep. Yeah, Tammy?
Tammy Wellunis, 298 College Highway. I have a couple questions. In regards to the land use and the proposal of the $3.2 million for the design phase, has... Did anyone look into putting addition on the end of this building for the police department and then only having to build a new fire department? Because this building already has a basement with elevators at work, bathroom. When you tear down the fire station, it would give you plenty of parking. Did anybody look into that?
While I was on the board, I don't rec... No, while I've been on the committee, I don't think so. Something may have done that before me.
I don't think that would be feasible, because we have wetlands right there, and extending it further that way, it just wouldn't be enough space or room to actually move anything.
On the end of here?
The end of the building up here?
Not up there, here.
There's a stream that goes underneath the parking lot?
Yeah. That's why it's wet down at the College Highway all the time.
I think Tammy's referring to the end of that building, not the COA side.
Not the COA side, the other end. Where the building department or the permit planning board department is, that end that jogs out.
I don't know that anything has happened. I do know that there's issues with water, even under the parking lot, though. So that may be a challenge, because even our septic there. So, not that I'm aware of.
All right. And my second question is, we obviously know that this town is growing. We have seniors that are passing away, and more families coming in, and the Norris School is going to be too small. Was it ever proposed to have a new school built on the land and turn Norris School into the Fire Department, Police Department, and Senior Centers, so that you had everything right there with all of that land behind it for fields and walking areas? And it already has a commercial kitchen. It already has a septic system that withstands 500-plus students. The idea of putting a school over on the College Highway property, it's not in use all year round. So, you know, yes, there's a septic issue, and that, yes, there's a drainage issue, but, I mean, who's going to benefit more? All the kids coming into town? I do want a safety complex. I just wonder if anybody looked into the Norris School being turned into it?
I don't know that. I've heard that from you. I have not heard that from other meetings I've attended, and I haven't been part of the land use planning in detail, to know that that has been looked at. But all the work that has been done with the land use planning has been shared with the public and has been online. So I don't recall that that has been done. And I think when we first, that first got raised, the idea was that there may need to be some sort of a study for Norris to see exactly what levels are going to be achieved by what time. There was talk about doing a study at some point about whether that was really as bad as we thought it might be, and at what point.
So we're just gonna keep doing studies?
So that study never happened, to my knowledge.
Okay.
So at this point in time, the Public Safety Building Committee, the Senior Center Building Committee have looked at lands all over town. I'm not 100% sure that they've looked at every addition of buildings, but maybe Cindy can enlighten me, because she's been on the committees longer than I have.
So my third question would be, how does one go about getting a petition to have an article added to one of the special town meetings? Do we need 500? Do we need 1,000 signatures?
Autoriters here?
How does it go about to get this on so that the town looks at it?
Okay. Robert, I don't know. Citizen petition?
One of them, I believe it's a special, needs 100 signatures, and the annual needs 10. Could be reversed, but at this present moment, that's my feeling.
10. Cindy?
Cindy Palmer, and I've been on this iteration of the Building Public Safety Building Committee since its inception. And the answer is, we did look at 207 College Highway for uses. Now, we didn't specifically say, could it be added on, could a police department be added on to this current building? But the whole 207 College Highway, which is the address here, was looked at very closely for any of the uses of the Public Safety Building Committee. So I think I could answer that.
Thank you. Okay. One more? Then we'll get on to the agenda. Go ahead.
Margaret Larson, 9 David Street. I'm a member of the Norris School Committee, as well as the representative to Hampshire Regional. So first, I want to thank you for your continued support of the Hampshire Regional Budget. And I'm here tonight to ask you to support the override for the Norris School Budget. If we need to stick with the 4% increase, that's going to be devastating for staff, for students. Class sizes will increase. I'm worried about our students losing enrichment opportunities. And I'm also worried about our students getting behind as they move through the rest of the grades, because the number of students in the classroom and the possibility that they may not get assistance they need, particularly for our special ed students. Oh, sorry.
All types asking.
Yes, indeed. And then the other thing that I would like to ask is that Select Board considers for Chapter 70 funds, that they, you apply those to directly to the school budget, rather than to the general fund. So those are the two requests I have going forward. Obviously, I know that's not an opportunity for this year. You can get back to my meeting.
Thank you. All right. Okay. Assuming nobody else is here for open time for the public, we have, just to reiterate who we have in front of us here tonight. So we have...
Doug.
Doug is on, yes?
Doug's on. He was on.
So we have the Finance Committee. Would you guys like to call yourselves to order, please? You have a quorum? You guys are full committee.
I don't see Doug.
Doug was there.
Doug was there.
Oh, there's Doug.
Doug, yeah? Yeah. Okay.
Yes, so we have a quorum. It is 6:10.
You can just have that mic closer to you, that's all. All right, so we have the Finance Committee, Reggie, Doug, and Becky, and we have Chris John and Stephen on zooming in on hybrid, and I'm not positive on Dan yet. He may join us. So with that, we've all got our quorums, okay? All right, let us move forward.
Make a motion to take up the 10 appointments, all for election workers, all terms to expire in May of 2026, for the following people: Mary Robinson, Bunny Huntley, Kathy Ingram, Ellen Hamel, Marion Hamel, Elizabeth Grassi, Jane Howard, Susan Seabolt, Stacy Schmedl, and Joanne Perrier.
Okay. I'll second that. Could we have a vote, please, Select Board? So Stephen, roll call vote, please. All those in favor?
Johnson, aye.
One aye.
Fowles aye. Okay. All right, that's taken care of. Thank you. All right. Scott, briefly, Town Administrator Report, anything in particular besides budget issues?
Last week, I was able to take Chris Mason, who's a representative for the Office of Energy on the state level, just to see the green energy projects and sign off on the projects. Today, we met with the Land Use Planning Advisory Committee. We're looking for May 10th to probably do our next big public one.
May 10th?
May 10th. This is Saturday morning. And also, we met with Capitol last week, so we're gonna probably have one more Capitol meeting in the next week or two, just to finalize everything with that.
Okay. Isn't May 10th... No, May 11th is Mother's Day, right? Okay. Okay. All right. How about any Select Board reports? John, anything from your end, other committees?
All Norris and the budget.
All Norris, okay. Stephen, anything from any of your committees?
Scott covered it, land use.
Okay. All set? All right. I'm not seeing Dan. I've got just a couple things. The Grants Committee did put in a grant request for the MVP project, and we won't hear about that until July. And that is a feasibility study to look at Norris possibly being a cooling center, and also to look at not only the inside, but the outside of Norris, where there's a lot of pavement, and especially around the playground areas that generate a lot of heat back toward the building. There's not much of HVAC in Norris, except for the office and the library, and not enough space even for the kids on a super hot day when they need to cool down. So this is just a feasibility study. No clue whether we're a candidate or not. It's a pretty competitive grant, but just to find out whether it's even possible, given the structure of Norris, to modify anything to make a couple of rooms at least more air efficient and act as a cooling center during the hot months, which would benefit not only the kids while they're still there in June, but also anybody else in town, especially seniors that would need perhaps air conditioning on a super, super hot stretch of weather that we might have. Other than that, we've been very busy with the 250th Anniversary Campaign. We've got Earth Day Litter Cleanup coming up, April 22nd. So again, a lot of things are out on the website. You're seeing them on, hopefully, on the Town's 250th Anniversary Facebook page. It's on Instagram. It's also on the Southampton Community page, and certainly on the website. And then we'll have posters around town. So there's an Earth Day Cleanup, April 22nd, 10 to 12. Looking for any and all volunteers, students at Norris. Maybe you can get some extra hours earned for your credit hours, if you need some. We're gonna have three locations in town, and you can read about that on the information that's provided. But it'll be from 10 to 12. We'll provide the goodies to use to pick up all the trash, and have probably a pizza meeting afterwards at Conant Pavilion, when we're done at noon time. The other big one coming up, and I know Ian's been all excited about this, is Ian's baby, who's been working on this one, the big May 3rd Conant Park Competition. So we're starting off with, which I think is great, Whisker Wars, which is the finale, if you will, of the beard-growing contest. So we've had one beard contest that people had to enter into, the longest-growing beard, sorry, the fastest-growing beard, starting January 15th. So there were a few entries there, and those would be judged at that point in time. But it's also basically for walk-ins. There are three other parts of the contest: longest beard, most artistic, and the mountaineer, which nobody had to register for. You just need to show up at Conant Park Pavilion, May 3rd at 12:30, it's 12:15, and we'll set up a judging competition at that point in time. That'll be followed by a cornhole tournament, multiple ages, I believe, and a tug-of-war tournament as well. Those will be about 1 o'clock. And then a Battle of the Badges softball game, which will be, from what I understand, police and fire, probably closer to 2:30 at Conant Park. So, big day, and that follows in the afternoon after the Little League opening for the SYA. So that's a big morning, and followed up in the afternoon. And then the next day, on the 4th, to help celebrate National Bike Day, the Friends of the Greenway and the Greenway Committee are sponsoring a walk-bike event at Coleman Road to walk down Manhand Trail, to walk at least as far, I think, as South Street and bike even further. So that's gonna be at 2:00 PM on May 4th. So again, all of these things are posted. There'll be flyers around town as well. So please join in. We've got lots of things going on, and try to make it available for all ages and get the word out as best we can. So. All right, so with that, we have some new business. Scott, you want to take us through the very, I guess, the first one, purchase and sale? Wolcott Road, Mountain Waters Project.
Yep. So this is the purchase and sale agreement. The deed is currently being worked on by KP Law and Kessel, and we're just waiting for the survey. So hopefully, the closing will happen in the next couple of weeks, but this will be the first step for that property.
All right. And this, in full disclosure, this is property that was owned by my brother at one point in time. He is now deceased, and so this is from his estate. And this is property that was voted on through the Mountain Waters Project, whatever, last year, sometime, right, during one of our town meetings. So this is finally coming to an end. It's about 19 acres. The total price is $185,000, and it will be for conservation purposes only, to my knowledge. So Concom will actually manage this, kind of along with Kestrel, is that right?
Yep.
Okay. So what do we need to do tonight? We need to vote to sign?
Do we accept the deed from the estate of Fowles?
Sorry. Hello? Come again. Stephen?
I move that we accept the deed from the estate of Fowles for conservation purposes in perpetuity.
Purchase and sale.
Purchase and sale. Okay. Not the deed, but purchase and sale. Yep. Okay. With that amendment, okay?
Second. I stand corrected. Thank you.
All right. Any discussion? All right. Okay, then we will have the original to pass around and sign by the Select Board. Okay. That will get one more property for the Mountain Waters underway, which I'm sure they're looking forward to getting all of those taken care of.
You gotta call the vote, Chris.
Yep. So that'll be good. Yes. No, we will. So, okay, so with that, all of those in favor? Could we have a roll call vote, please? Stephen?
Johnson, aye.
One aye.
Johnson, aye.
Thank you very much. All right, motion is approved, and we will sign that momentito before the end of the night. Okay. Next up, College Highway Phase 1, sorry, Phase 2 and Phase 3 Water Main Replacement Loan 2026. And I think I see Brett here. You want to just give us a couple minutes on that? I think we have a general idea, but go ahead and give us an update.
Hello, everybody. Brett Simmons, Superintendent Water Part. So you gotta bear with me. My first time going through this paperwork, so I'll take any and all guidance.
Yeah, I think we've got the information for the warrant already, but just for the public, just tell them what the project is, where you've stopped, and where you're gonna go, and what this is about.
Okay, so this project was an engineering project I started before I took over as the Water Department. Last, in 2023, it finished with the actual installation of the water main. We're laying 12-inch main out there, replacing 1932-inch, 1932-six-inch cast iron pipe that's tuberculated, old, poor shape. Got a couple of main breaks in the last three to six years, from the best information I could come up with in our files. It's in such poor condition that it's not connected out front of Town Hall, which makes for a potential nightmare of a distribution issue, you know, depending if we have any more issues. Any water main breaks that we have out there, because it's Mass Highway, very expensive to repair. The last one that was out here by the Fire Department, it was a leak in February of 2022 that got finished up. Well, it got paved according to Mass Highway standards. And the total cost of our project was best guessed between overtime, highway, repair, and private contractor at, you know, prevailing wage rate was probably about $24,000. So any digging we do out there is very expensive. Again, this engineering project was started before my time, so Phase 2 and Phase 3 would take up, pick up where College Highway and Clark Street meet Conant Park. Phase 2 was initially to get to Town Hall, right out front of the door here in Town Hall. And Phase 3 was from Town Hall to Palmory Meadow, where the other section was done, I think roughly 2017. The engineering stuff is coming on five years old, so we're gonna have to pay a little bit of a fee to restamp it. Would be good for a couple more years after that, I believe, is what the engineer told me. And... What else is... Oh, so I'm trying to combine Phases 2 and Phase 3, because the SRF money, the state fund money, is all tied up with lead service inventory and... And PFOS, yes.
That's their newest priority, those two?
Right. And so because of those two projects taking up all the SRF money, the only way we can go about this is USDA loans. Very, from what I could tell, nobody wants to use the USDA, because it's a very complicated funding and reporting. But there's no other place to really get, you know, a low-interest loan at this point to do that project. We were supposed to do Phases 2 and 3 in separate phases, but after talking to engineers and a couple of contractors, we feel that if we combine Phase 2 and Phase 3, yes, it's gonna be for a miserable summer-long project out here to do 4,900 feet of it in one summer. But probably the cost savings is anywhere between, depending on prices of materials that go up now because of all the, everything going on with materials, could potentially save, best estimate, $75,000 to $100,000 on per unit price per pipe. Buying more, you get a better price. And then mobilization costs is a fixed cost of, it'll save $40,000 in mobilization costs from one project, dropping everything off, picking everything up, and doing it again on Phase 2. So.
Do you have an idea what the cost was? Because I, do you have an idea of the cost for the second, third phase?
Yeah, Phases 2 and Phases 3 combined, and these are conservative numbers, is just a little bit over $2 million, 2.069 million, would be through a 40-year USDA loan. We'd have to get a temporary construction loan, as USDA does not fund the project while it was going on. So it'd be a short term. I've been in talks with the tax collector. She believes that this could potentially go to a cheaper rate than 4.25%. And anybody I've talked to said 4.25% was expensive, you know, a little higher. But because of our per capita income being well above $100,000 in town for a median home income, we fall out of all loan forgiveness, grant forgiveness, or grants and all opportunities like that. So it would strictly, if this project, which needs to, it's been, I'm not saying neglected, it's been, it's long overdue, based on reports of the quality of the pipe and the distribution system out here, being the main thorough through, through our distribution to get to southern part of town. It's time that it gets done. The last Water Department regime had it all planned out. It's taken me a little longer to get it. We had hoped that it would have started last year. There was just a lot to bite off and just step into this role and understand everything and making sure that...
And are there any grants available that you're aware of?
Zero. Zero. So it's strictly gonna be spalling the ratepayers.
Because we had, if I'm not mistaken, we had put in about $180,000 or thereabouts from ARPA money.
I believe it was $332. I believe it was $332,000.
Okay, you're right. We had two...
Right, there was two, there was two phases, yep.
Yeah.
And so, yeah, the rest of that project was around $681,000. So the remainder of the, from $681 to $232 was, came out of Water Department operating budget, the Enterprise Fund. And so what I think I started to say in the beginning, or this minute ago, was talking to the tax collector, we believe that potentially, because we fall out of the grant forgiveness and through the USDA loan at 4.25%, there is a potential chance that when it goes out to bid, it could be at a much lower rate. You know, I don't know what that is. I don't know if anybody's got a crystal ball, but take some guesses.
Chris? So Brett, this money isn't going to be paid back through the tax revenue. It's gonna be paid back through the enterprise account, right?
Yep.
Have the Water Commissioners approved it?
Yes, we had, we talked about it last night, the last night's meeting. And so again, just to start back up, thanks for sneaking this in under short, short notice. I've had this, I had a meeting about a week and a half ago, the USDA loan specialists, and because I've been trying to track them down, and the office recently got closed and consolidated, and I thought this project was done because that office was closed. Turns out, they relocated, they've consolidated. And so this has been six weeks in the making for this, for this kind of schedule and contact, for this meeting with the USDA loan officer, so.
And just for clarity, you mentioned last time that some of the money came in through the Enterprise Fund, so some will this time as well?
It's all gonna come through the Enterprise Fund.
So just explain that for people that are listening.
Oh, yeah. So this is not, this is strictly through the ratepayers, you know, which is separate from the taxpayers. This is strictly, the Water Department is run through an Enterprise Fund, meaning all costs incurred will come through the Enterprise Fund.
Madam Chair, can I ask you a question?
Sure, go ahead.
Is the town, so the loan from USDA and the short-term loan, is the town on the hook for it? Who is the borrower? Is it the Enterprise Fund with a guarantee from the town?
I can answer that.
You can answer that, better or not?
Because they're a department of the town, even though they're an enterprise, they're primary, but if they fail, it goes on the general revenue.
Okay.
So if the Commissioners aren't keeping the rates in line to cover the debt, we would have to cover shortfall, much like the transfer station.
Thank you.
Yeah. Okay. Good.
So just to follow on that, so the Commissioners, when they voted on this, they looked at their reserves and their rates, and they're comfortable with the current rates being charged and/or plans for increases, that they're gonna be able to cover this bill?
Plans for increases, yes. Right. It's roughly an 11% increase to our operating budget.
Okay.
Do we need to approve it separately, or when we get to 14?
No, I think it's gonna be on the warrant as well. So I think, we just wanted Brett to come and explain a little bit more about it, so that we understood it. So, thanks, Brett, for popping in on that. Appreciate that.
Thank you.
Okay.
So, again, being new at this, is this...
So we're gonna go through the whole list of everything that's coming up on the warrant. We'll get to whichever one that is...
It's number 14 on the warrant.
On the warrant.
Yep. We'll go article by article.
We're gonna go article, yeah.
Next item.
Put it in last, you get bumped last.
Yeah. So we're gonna go through the whole list and see what's on there and understand what we're gonna be looking at for Annual Town Meeting. So yours is already put in there, so you don't need to have any more explanation, but thank you for coming on that part. That's great. Very helpful.
One last thing. I have the continuation, I understand. I just wanted to make it, we just got also in our meeting last night, we had to finalize that overtime policy that has been in the making. And I don't...
We'll have to get it back on the agenda. Yeah, we were waiting to get something from you that we can take a look at again.
Just got signed. That's fresh off the autograph table last night at the Commissioner meeting.
Good. Thank you.
Yep.
All right. Okay, Scott, let's tackle the ATM articles, I think. And that's what, folks, we've got here, and you've got a large packet for us here.
So they're still in very rough draft until tomorrow, when I'll be able to kind of finalize everything. But just going through them. So the first article, Consent Agenda, I don't think we're actually gonna need it.
So the page before that has another article, one, is that just...
Oh, that's just, yeah, it's formatting and...
Scratched out?
Yeah, that's gonna be where the, the list is for the pages.
Okay.
I got you. Okay.
So we probably won't need the Consent Agenda this year. The big articles are obviously the annual operating... The big articles are obviously the annual operating budget for FY26, depending on how we wanna do it. So for this one, I just copied and pasted what we did the last time we did an override, which was for the Fire Department. So I have to update all the numbers, obviously, and then that would lead into the next article, which would be the supplemental budget override specifically for Norris School.
So Scott, can you confirm, like, the $19 million number is not the right number?
Right, that's the 20.
It's gonna be the 23 that you have on the balance budget piece? Okay.
Yeah, it'll be the, where'd it go? 23,527,388.99, so I'll round up. And then that would lead into the override specifically for the Norris budget.
So I'll go back to my objection on Article Two and Article Three at night. I'll, to start, I'll acknowledge that's how we've traditionally done it. But just because it's how we've always done it matches the definition of insanity. I would offer that DOR specifically gives us three different ways to do this. And I'll make the same argument that I made the other night, is I believe it should be a single question. If you approve it, you're approving the override. If you don't approve it, you're approving the lower number, and the override fails. I believe, while I do believe that the citizens need to be heard on this, I believe it needs to be heard at the ballot when the polls are open for eight hours and all eligible voters are able to come, versus the potential of it being killed by 100 or 120 people at town And I recognize that I may be in the minority on this opinion.
So you're, you're recommending not to do a separate article for the override for the 897,000?
I think it's one question. If, if it approved, if the question passes.
The one question has the override?
Has the override in it. If it fails, the override falls out and the budget passes without the override.
And I'm, I'm gonna say, and I know I'm not on the select board, but I disagree with John's position, I think it's, makes more sense, and I think it's more clear to vote on the budget than the override.
I actually agree with John.
All right, Stephen, you have any thoughts? Or Doug, anybody out there?
Yes, I agree with John. I would second that as a motion and.
It's not a motion yet. Robert, yes?
And Doug here, I also agree with John as well.
Regardless of what you decide tonight, the town moderator and the town still have the right and prerogative to divide the question at the meeting.
If you move to, correct me if I'm wrong, procedure-wise, you'll move to divide the question without objection, so the populace could raise an objection?
The moderator can divide the question on the moderator's own, as the moderator has done the last 15 years. If the town wants to divide a question, the moderator hasn't divided, the town will then vote on it. But once the moderator decides to divide a question, there's no vote by the town voters.
So if the, so if there's only one question before the body, you can take that question and break it into multiple parts to create two articles?
As, as, as has been done for the last 15 years, there's only been one question for the budget, but it's been divided by the moderator. Yes, because the idea is not to create chaos, is not to create confusion, it's a separate, two separate issues, or three or four.
So through the chair, can we find out through legal counsel whether or not what the moderator's proposal goes is actually correct? Not that I doubt it, but I'm not the attorney, he's not the attorney.
As you have done maybe 12 years ago as well, yes, certainly.
The fact that a sole person can override every citizen's opinion.
I think that's the role of the moderator, to my knowledge, but we can double-check that. I mean, that's what I think the moderator's role is in town meeting.
Yes.
But, so you're saying that, if I'm understanding, that if we did present the one question for the full budget with the override, you would still divide it up, whatever, public safety, I'm forgetting all the different categories, sorry, debt, et cetera, et cetera.
100%, yes.
And then one of those categories would also be the override?
Yes.
As a separate one?
But.
But it's part of the same, it's one article, right? Is that right?
I, well, I don't know how it's gonna be presented.
Exactly, that's my next point. If we don't put the detail on the article, he has nothing to divide. If it's this number or this number, and it's summary only, without the detail below it, and there's a handout for it, there's nothing to divide. So it's what we decide to put on. Now traditionally, we put the whole spreadsheet on.
That happened about 11, 10 years ago, the moderator was able to find the details and divide the question.
So I guess we pass on this and let the moderator do what he wants.
Do we have the, do we have the one from?
This is the one that we used.
This is the one from before, this is, okay, let's just take a look for a second about, yeah, move that out of the way, that really doesn't help anybody, I don't think.
We then go to the attachment.
So then there was this, there was an attachment, right, there's an attachment that went to it that had at least the bigger lines of each category of the various department-level budgets, right? So highway, library, I'm sorry, yeah, highway, public safety, library, debt, et cetera, and town, townwide expenses, right? Those are some of the typical ones. And then, so this is the one, okay, this is the one that we did as the override for the Fire Department, right? Where this then became not the entire budget again, but just to vote on the override part.
Which is option three under the DOR regulations.
Right. So you're saying that this part would be all right, this, this?
No, I'm, DOR gives us three options.
Right. So this is one of those options, right? That's one of the options.
Well, yeah, but you just asked me if, if I was okay with that being the option.
Okay, you're not.
I'm not.
Okay.
With the DOR.
And if I may, Madam Chair.
Approach number one that John had mentioned.
Yeah.
And then we have approach number two, which is the two separate budgets.
Right.
And then we would have approach number, it's not labeled number three, but separate departmental contingent budget article. So Norris would be a, Norris is a department, so it would be a specific override for Norris budget.
And my thought process here is what this sets up potentially is, because there are two separate questions, and the budget would come first before the override, if you, there wouldn't stop anybody from getting up and slashing $890,000 from the regular budget before getting that passed. So now we're mending this on the floor, as long as we have it typed out in two versions, we're going, we're going, we're hacking that, there could be a group that wants to hack that budget to save the Norris piece, versus, let's just wait and see if the override passes. Because now, the ship's already out of the harbor when we get to the second question, versus it's one question, here's the number, send it to the ballot box, let the 2,700 registered voters have eight hours to vote on this, versus a two-hour session Saturday morning at Norris.
But we would still have an attached budget that shows every departmental.
You can have it as attachment, yeah.
Yeah, I'm thinking Stephen and Doug may have questions.
Madam Chair.
Stephen, go ahead.
So the example that was shown was ordinary capital bonding and not a, a school budget override. So difference, I believe, is debt exclusion, certainly it's the purpose. And because we're part of a regional school system, and if we were not to do our due diligence and give all of our citizens an opportunity to weigh in on our part of the regional budget, I think we'd be failing to do our duty. So attendance at town meeting is a minority of the voters, and participation at the ballot box is at least marginally larger. That's why I'm with John, and I wanted to add this distinction, that we have this regional complication on the school budget as compared to buying important equipment for the town.
Okay, thanks. Doug, did you have something to chime in on?
No, I think John and Stephen's comments really cover my points as well.
So what does that mean? The main thing we gotta be sure of is however we vote it for the warrant, I mean, we have to vote on the ballot question tonight, tonight is the deadline on that, right?
Yep.
So we have to be very clear in terms of how that ballot question has to match whatever we do in the warrant, is my understanding, right?
Yes. Yep, so the ballot question is, the deadline is in a couple hours, I'm gonna give it right to Lucy, whichever the select board decides. This, the actual warrant doesn't have to be done until a week before, so we have some time, but the earlier the better for the public to get it out, so. But I can still distribute draft budgets and things like that while we decide which approach we wanna do.
Well, I mean, we ought to be able to, I mean, most of us are here tonight, except for Dan, so I think we ought to be able to decide one way or another on this. So just, just to recap, I'm gonna be sure that I understand, what do you see as the main advantages of doing it this other way? I wanna be clear.
It forces the issue to the ballot box.
And, and it doesn't?
Much like, much like the $3.2 million vote, that, that's a ceremonial vote.
Right.
Although in this case, it's gonna happen at the ballot box.
Right.
But no money can be encumbered and no money can be spent until we get the full package based on the way the wording was. So having a sole question at town meeting just moves it, because if it fails at town meeting, the whole budget's out.
Right.
So the 100 folks that are there, this gets to the ballot, it's a simple majority, you need 51 to do it, it goes to the ballot, and now you need the, again, now it opens one question, because the ballot question will be framed in the one, it's a yes or no, at the ballot box.
Right.
And then the widest group of citizens eligible to vote will have the widest opportunity of time to vote on this, because polls are open for eight hours.
And there is really voting.
Couple that with early voting.
And there's mail-in voting too, so.
Right, yeah, mail-in too, yeah, okay.
One other point is, I look at a town meeting not as the quantity of vote, but the quality of vote, so that all voices can be heard out loud to each other, and that can be looked at in recordings down the road before the elections. I look at the quality of the discussion at the town meeting as more important than the quantity of voters.
So presenting it this way, though, does not stop somebody from standing up, like you said, and saying, we don't want this amount for the override, right?
No, there's nothing that prevents it, because he'll ask for for and against.
And that stops everything in its tracks right there.
For what, the discussion?
Well, for the, for the budget itself, because we, would we fall back to the, our base budget then, that didn't have the override?
No, if it failed, we would, somebody would be in the corner typing something up.
Yeah. Love it.
Otherwise, I don't, in my time in town, it's never happened, but the town meeting would be suspended till the next day or till a time later, because you gotta have the budget, there's gotta be a budget.
Yeah, it's never happened in 20 years.
Okay.
But I think explaining, you know, explaining it, even if, let everybody be heard that's there, yea, nay, whatever it is, but then the argument is, is, is this, we're not talking about borrowing money to buy a pickup truck. We're talking about, in this particular case, the education system, which really, where we are right now, not because of anything that happened within the town, but it's years of other problems that have gone unchecked, that have now come home to roost, and is it fair to put the burden of that on the, on the kids? You know, and Margaret alluded to it, if this fails, it's the equivalent of 10 full-time positions, that's 11% of the staff being reduced. And I argue that every single person who's registered to vote should have an opportunity to cast a ballot.
Madam Chair.
People wanna have a motion then to?
I would like to second that motion strongly. I think it's not only a matter of informed participation, but access. And so this provides access both at town meeting and at the election, which ultimately is required. I, I think this is the most democratic approach, and the reason why I come to this position is it's my strategic judgment that this is most supportive of the school. That's, that's where I'm coming from.
I also think for presentation purposes, when we get to the attachment, you know, it's still the same way as it's normally seen, here's all the lines and departments, and here's the, here's Budget A and Budget B, and the only line that are gonna be different is when you get to Norris. Because everybody else should, should match up, right? Scott?
Um, it should.
Yeah, the 897 is sitting on the Norris line item.
That's gonna be visible on the Norris line item only, right? The extra amount.
So you have two columns of numbers.
For the budget presentation, it'll be basically that whole package I sent out, so it'll be this, it'll be this, and then the individual, the three pages for each department, the department overview, the personnel services, and then the operating costs will be distributed. So it'll be a pretty significant booklet.
I believe spreading out the budget and the votes gives people time to spread out their emotions. I haven't seen the article, the motion, but I imagine having yea or nay, and people are against the override, they're gonna vote the budget down.
Mm-hmm.
And then you don't have a budget.
Correct.
And you don't have an override.
Correct.
So I see that as a high risk.
And if we vote all the, if we did call it by line, as you've usually done, and again, just to be clear, that if, if all the other ones pass, but then the override line failed, we still don't have a budget, right?
Can I show the moderator the sample?
Without education.
Robert, have you seen this, the sample?
No, I haven't seen it.
This is, this is what Scott is proposing to put forward for your attachment. Where normally you would all run down, you'd have subsections, but here it's just each department listed separately. So there would be one, this is the non-override, then there'd be one with the override, and the Norris number would be different.
All right, so I think we have a motion on the floor, and do we have a second on that?
Second.
All right, second. Any other discussion on this? So I think we understand that we would like to go toward, the way I'm hearing the motion would be under this first contingent, non-contingent budget?
The DLS approach number one.
DLS number one?
I can author it that way.
Okay, all right. That would be what, what is the, the desired change that we would make? We would still ask, though, I guess from what you're saying, John, that we would just double-check with legal counsel in terms of the ability to still call the, call the different departmental lines, line by line, just make sure that that is doable or not doable. Okay, does that take care of it?
So a question, Madam Chair. So the Finance Committee usually weighs in on each, each of the items. So in this case, we're only offered one item to?
Each article, right?
Each article.
Yep.
Rather than two articles, we have the single article, that's the entire budget now.
Right, the article, yes, this is what I'm hearing.
Either we like it or we don't, yeah.
Yeah, right. And so you're.
The override baked in.
Right. The way I'm hearing it, it would be the entire budget in one column, the base budget that we know, right? The contingent budget, am I right, would have the one with the override in it, but the language up in the top would be what?
A yes vote approves the override, and no vote fails the override. And the, and the contingent budget goes through.
But the override is not a separate item.
Correct.
It's just part of the budget.
It's just part of, it's gonna be listed in those two columns, but it should be evident that as you get down to those categories, that where that extra money is, is under the education line, right? Because we're comparing, essentially, it's the same budget except for the education line for Norris.
Yep, so I'll just add the 897 to it.
Okay, I think we have a motion and a second, and if no further discussion, we'll take a select board vote. My roll call, please, Stephen?
Johnson, aye.
Lumber, aye.
Fouls, no. Motion passes. Next.
To Madam Chair.
Yes.
Is this a good time for the Finance Committee?
Well, I'm just wondering about procedure-wise, is that, where do you guys normally would chime in on that? As you would recommend or not recommend articles, right?
I think we do that, we usually have a separate meeting.
Separate meeting on that, though.
We do that?
Separate meeting.
Separate meeting rather than.
Do we have time to do that?
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, because this, yes, that wouldn't affect the, the actual warrant part, so that'd be fine.
Okay.
Yeah, the warrant itself doesn't have to be pushed, published for another week or so. So you're good on that, you're good, okay? All right, so that's what we will do, and we'll double-check on legal counsel in terms All right, so that's what we will do, and we'll double-check on legal counsel in terms of the breaking down of the budget at town meeting, okay?
Yep.
All right, next article.
Uh, next up is a little bit of a change. Generally, the elected official salaries are always put into the decennial budget. This would actually separate out the two elected compensated officials that we have, the town clerk and the treasurer collector.
So is their collective salary going to be in Article 1?
Yes.
Got a wrong number in there, be Article?
Budgeting for that would be, without Article 3, the elected officials being approved, they couldn't be paid that. So being budgeted for and then being approved to pay is different.
Yeah.
And they've been budgeted for, but you need the town meeting vote because they're elected to approve them. The article numbering is wrong, just so you know?
Yeah, there's a lot of errors.
Okay, all right. Okay. And so that would be for two people, right? Just two, two positions, okay. Next up?
Next is the Water Prize Enterprise fiscal year '26, along with the Transfer Station Enterprise, the next article.
These are fairly standard articles that we have anyway.
Then we have the three articles with the transfers to our three different stabilization funds, depending what the Select Board chooses to divide them. Uh, we have rescinding previous year capital appropriations. The list is going to grow as we work on it tomorrow, so it'll probably be about two dozen.
And can you explain what this is all about? Why is this happening?
So we have, um, we went through all the different accounts that we've had, outstanding for our special accounts and our capital expenses. There's a lot, there's probably about three or four dozen capital expenditures that have been approved by town meeting that were never expended out of or just a little bit out of. So this would essentially take the old votes and nullify them, and then we can, next year we can actually?
Repurpose the cash.
Exactly, so.
There's some that might have been spent, but not all the way spent as well?
I'm guessing the sidewalk repairs with $600 left in it.
Yeah.
We probably borrowed, approved $5,000, it was $4,400 or something.
I think that was the full amount, I'm not sure, though. So, yeah, it's a lot of forensic, we have to go back. So the ones that are obvious, like this year, like the computer network service from 2019, the $7,500 that we never even touched, things like that, where we check with the department and that they're okay with going forward with it, so. The other stuff, there's a lot of that we're going to have to do a little bit more research on, but this will help get, clear off, hopefully, you know, a third to a half of them.
So a lot of these were ones where maybe we did, we actually did it, but it never, it never needed the full amount of money that we thought it would, or something like that?
And then we also have to rescind unused borrowing authorizations, so we're looking for some other ones, but the latest one is the 23 Norris Elementary School van. They were authorized to borrow $98,000. We ended up purchasing that with available funds, so we didn't need that article. Next up is the Investment Committee for Trust Funds. It's a placeholder, I need to just talk to John, just make sure I get all the right language that he wants, and there's some standardized language I'm going to insert there. The next two, the next article is for the Water Department for a transfer of retained earnings. The next one would be authorized borrowing for the Highway Department heating system. Working at Randall's to get some final numbers, but currently it stands, it'll cost between $180,000 to $200,000 for the heating system. It is failing. If we don't have it, by, it's scheduled by the fall, the equipment that we have, which runs on diesel, the fuel will essentially gel up if it's not properly heated. And that equipment would be useless for snow removal. So we currently have $350,000 in our capital expenditures, so if we were to take this out of capital, it would essentially wipe out half of it. So the idea would be to borrow over, you know, probably about five to eight years. It would cost about $40,000 a year to pay for it over that period. This, next year, we don't have any capital coming off, but the year after, we do have some, so it'll be a little bit of a hit for next year.
Just back on the Water Enterprise one, that was for maintenance to Glendale Well, right? That's that one, okay. All right, go ahead.
Uh, next would be the replacement that Brad had talked about for the borrowing, for the College Highway. Then the next one would be the unpaid accounts from previous fiscal years. So this would tie into the $450,000 central office costs that were unaccounted for over the last couple of years, because it was a previous year's bill, or they didn't actually receive the bill, but it was a previous year cost.
Hampshire to Norris, just to be clear to people.
No, this is Hampshire Regional, not Norris School. So this is money that's been owed over the last couple of years. We're working out an agreement with the school committee, the regional school committee, hopefully paid over a period of three years, but this would allow us to pay the previous outstanding balance.
And this is central office costs for Norris from Hampshire, okay?
Right, it's the portion of central office that got allocated to Southampton Elementary, similar appropriation was made to West Hampton and to Williamsburg. But to be clear on this, this money, the town has this money. We budgeted it.
Yeah.
It wasn't spent, it was closed out, fell out by free cash, went to stabilization, went to operation, went to OPEB, and then 25% left. So it's, this isn't a shortfall.
Right, no issue.
Just untimely billing.
Right, but one that we can stretch out a little bit, we don't have to pay the full amount all at once from?
See how the vote goes tonight?
We didn't have quorum tonight, so we were unable to vote on it at the regional.
Okay.
So the question is, can this be brought with a number to town meeting, and then that's, that can be changed on the floor? Is that possible?
Well, the number will be just for, will be the total number for paying the previous year bills.
Whether it's two years or three years.
So does it, so whatever it is on the warrant, it is on the warrant, and then the agreement is separate to divide it out?
Are you sure? I would think if we're not going to pay it immediately, if we're going to spread this debt over multiple years, then it's a form of debt that we're voting on, so we'd have to specify that. But I didn't do any research, I'm just thinking, because normally, pay last year's bills, Bradley gets the authorization, he cuts the check and pays the bill. Here, we're saying, we're going to pay it, but we're going to pay it over time.
Right.
Therefore creating a debt schedule.
Yeah.
I'm not sure how to do it, but I think that should be researched a little bit.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, I thought we were going to put just a sum on, not the full amount, on the, on the warrant. We were going to put a year, year one sum, that you were thinking about, whatever the school committee agreed to pay, whether it was $200,000 or whatever it might be.
I can check with, I can check with Michelle on that.
All right.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll get that clarified for you.
Uh, next is the swimming pool safety by law.
Yes, there'll be a revision.
Did we make the change?
Not yet, I'm gonna?
Any previously permitted work shall be permitted?
Yes, it's going to be grandfathered in from what Ron has told me.
Do we know where Ron's leaning on the eight-foot versus 12-foot line? That was the other.
Yeah, I think, I think all the lot lines, he was fine with grandfathering, I think, from what I heard.
What if you purchased the property prior to, prior to the vote, and you haven't built the pool yet?
Nothing, what I understood from him, but nothing would take effect until the date of the town meeting where it's voted on. So anything prior to the May town meeting?
Right, so if you had the parcel and planned on putting a pool in, but hadn't pulled the permit yet, you would be subject to the new rules afterwards.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, that's how I understood it, yeah.
And you got the latchpin figured out?
Yeah, I think so. It doesn't have to be so complicated, yes, yep.
Uh, the next one is a, like, just a placeholder. This is to align the quorum under our bylaws for the Concom to what the state quorum would be currently. I can't, won't go into details, but basically, the state and our local bylaws require different quorums for different votes on different subject matters. So this would align it so that as long as there's that one quorum for the state, would mirror what our bylaws, or our bylaws would mirror what the quorum for the state would be.
And there's a couple other small, minor, minor language changes as well, but not big.
Um, next, we have the zoning articles. The first one, the accessory dwelling unit, that was presented by the Planning Board.
It's a rather long one.
Yep.
The short version of this is, this will allow an existing property that has X amount of property to put up to, what, a 950-foot square foot granny home, so to speak? A grandparent home might be a better term?
Yeah, it's a percentage of the main dwelling.
Okay.
Uh, there is also a update to?
Site plan?
Uh, site plan review. And?
This is another zoning law? Yeah, these are all zoning bylaws.
Mm-hmm. And then the last one from planning would be a solar bylaw amendment.
Which does what, what's the?
On page 16, if you?
Yeah, that I would?
Can you make that bigger again?
And is the solar bylaw not necessarily being driven, but is it being offered in support of what's going on at the Shista's?
Uh, well, that's already been?
That's, that was, so whatever happened, whatever is in here, it's not impacting the Shista's?
Right, so we do have to, the Bishista's pilot will come up later on, so we do have to ask town meeting to allow the Select Board to negotiate the pilot agreement for that.
Madam Chair.
Yeah, Stephen?
The issue with the solar bylaw is that it was deemed to be burdensome and out of line with our neighboring communities, or things that were, um, single-family scale, but not affixed to the building. Yes, you can have ground mounted, but somehow we got into a whole lot more rigmarole, so this simplifies the permitting.
Okay, thanks. All right. Okay, so that's Planning Board, so there's three, three zoning bylaws from Planning Board, okay? CPC?
It's lengthy. Uh, next one would be the Community Preservation Articles, which is a traditional budget. Matching grant for the Greenway Design, and that was actually, we don't need that one anymore.
23 we don't need?
Yeah.
23 we don't need, that fell out.
Actually, I did want to add the solar, didn't make it in. So one art, a couple of different articles that didn't make it in was the solar pilot program. So with the Bishista, with the Bishista Orchards, um, solar going in, the town's able to negotiate a pilot, it's very restricted on what can or can't be in that anyways. So this would allow the Select Board to negotiate on behalf of town meeting to enter into the payment in lieu of taxes agreement.
Madam Chair?
Yes?
Uh, for the town administrator, is this akin to a royalty or a personal property tax? Or how is it in lieu of taxes? Pilot generally means a payment in lieu of taxes, so I'm not sure exactly what's being proposed.
Is it similar to what oil costs?
Yeah, is it a deferred?
Yeah, so it's, it's in lieu of a personal property tax on?
Yeah.
What the solar panels generate. But I think it's capped to at the dollar amount.
It is, it's?
It's like five grand, right?
It's equal to a certain amount based on like what it would normally be in the taxes, so. Yeah, it is, is not a lot of wiggle room. Sort of like the cannabis host agreement now, there's, the state really regulates what can and can't be into it.
Does that answer your question, Stephen?
Not really, but it's enough for now in this meeting. I mean, the rest I could take up with the assessors, and I'd be happy also going forward to be the least on?
Really understand, understand it better, we're just trying to go through the highlights of all the articles that would be on here tonight, yeah.
Uh, the next one would be our revolving fund spending limits. One deletion was the Board of Health from last year, so under the new, the old new model, so it's going back to the town receiving the funds from the inspections for the Health Department, and then setting aside a percent, a set amount for any special contracting services for next fiscal year.
Is this where the Finance Committee used to have an amount, or is that different?
Uh, that's different. And then there were two more that I requested. So this was from the assessors, unfortunately got in the, got lost in the email. But there was a request from the Board of Assessors to increase the tax exemption, as well as the asset limits, that seniors, surviving spouses, and other specific minors can receive. What it would do is essentially, instead of having to go back every year to town meeting, it hasn't been updated in a number of years, the state allows the ceiling of what the exemptions can be, and the town is kind of down here right now, so this would allow it to match the state level year after year with the exemptions. Cindy, I don't know if? CPI.
Yeah, and it's, it's behind. Is it automatically English in here, or is that voice written?
I believe so, yeah.
Yeah, I think so, yeah.
And the majority of these are reimbursed by the state?
Of course.
Right, yep. Not 100%, but the veterans and the widows and the blind.
Right. So the two proposals, so one is to raise the exemption amount, and one is to raise the asset limits.
Yep.
To qualify.
People have to present, not every senior's eligibility is based on asset.
Correct, yeah. So these would be two separate articles to be included.
Right, so the first, and the exemption would raise the amount that they can actually receive, and then the asset would be to raise, you know?
How they qualify.
Exactly, yep.
Okay, got it. All right, so with that, we're somewhere, we, our numbering isn't quite right, but we're somewhere in the 26, 28 range, probably, number of articles, thereabouts?
Yes.
Okay, so we definitely have work to do to tidy these all up and get all the language in there. We do have another week or so, right, to get this ready to be posted, so I don't really want to wait till the last minute, so the sooner the better we can do that.
Do you need a motion to close the warrant?
I think we do, we should have more articles coming in. Uh, I think we'll take the assessors' one that slid in under the line here, so let's go ahead and make a motion to close the warrant.
Motion to close, close the ATM warrant.
Okay, I'll second it.
Second?
Okay, all those in favor, Stephen?
Aye.
Lumber, aye.
Fouls, aye, okay. Okay, the ATM warrant for the May town meeting is closed for warrant articles, okay? Great, anything more on that to be dealt with? So where do we go now with the budget vote? It's on our agenda item here. In the Norris budget and the, whatever. Do we need further votes on that tonight?
Uh, yeah, I would appreciate a vote, just to make sure that we're all aligned. So what I handed out here is just the overall budget, and this was the 4% for Norris School. With that in mind, if you approve this, then I would also do another budget and break it out with $897,069 put back into the, put into the Norris line as well. So essentially, when we do the approach number one, it would show the two different budgets.
So this non-override budget is a total of $23,527,388 and 99 cents. That includes four and a half, or four, some, some 4% thereabouts for Norris, but it does not include the override, correct?
So one thing I do want to point out with the budget, so we did receive the vocational tuition, so it's going to be at four and a half percent, so that did save a little bit of money. We don't have the enrollment yet, so I think if we stick at that four and a half percent, I think we'll be okay. The letters are going out this week, so that's the, that's the one kind of question mark that's still hanging over. And then we also need to know, obviously, this in the House does, but we have to move forward with our budget. A couple of different things, so I know that the 4% is devastating to? A couple of different things, so I know that the four percent is devastating to Norris School. It's also devastating on the municipal side as well. We've used a lot of one-time monies, so this would take half of the ambulance stabilization account through revenue, so I was able to put some of that back in. Additionally, I revised the revenue from three seventy-five for ambulance receipts down to three fifty. The three seventy-five is being very generous based on December's highest revenues ever. Not the best way to do it, so ideally it should be probably closer to three twenty-five, three hundred twenty-five thousand dollars. So with the saved money from vocational, I reduced that back down to about to three fifty. Everything else, the compensation adjustment line item was taken out. The reserve fund for the finance committee was reduced down to five thousand. It does include the appropriation built into each department's budget for the percentage increase for the two percent. It does not include any steps or anything like that, so it's just a two percent change.
Highway?
Highway, the fifty-five thousand dollars was taken out again. So hopefully, if the override passes, that's gonna be something we might want to look at in the fall. But it is difficult on our side with this, so it's really, there's not many places to cut from our side of the budget. So we did have to really tighten our belt and use some creative bookkeeping and unfortunately, you know, one-time fees, one-time funds to get to that four percent.
So does that translate into we're overstaffed? Because if we have a two and a half percent limit, then how are we, I mean, I know how we're out of whack on the school as a department. But if we're, if the only place left to cut is staff, then by default, that means we're overstaffed. And I would argue that that's not an accurate statement. I would argue that the two and a half override, while it was all appropriate at the time it happened, needs to come back before the voters on a regular basis. And by regular, I don't know what that is, every five, ten, fifteen years? But when you have collective bargaining agreements that are, two and a half percent is no longer the norm, right? There are three or four going up, and the cost of everything is skyrocketing. It's just, yeah, you did trim on the other departments, but we need the right size of the budget. And then plan, there's also a lot going on right now, right? Because we've got the public safety building, we've got the council on aging building, we've got the apparatus issue. We've got the fact that we've got one ambulance that can't even hold a full tank of gas. We don't have a ladder truck, we don't have a tanker that's reliable. You know, we've deferred and deferred and deferred, and now the chickens come home to roost. I mean, this is gonna be a big pill to take, possibly, but.
As far as staffing, I want to just point out that most of our departments, our maintenance, we have a part-time custodian, accounting, we have a full-time person and a part-time person. Assessors, we have two less than full-time people, benefits eligible, but less than thirty hours.
Scott, I agree with you, we're understaffed, and this being understaffed is exactly what happened at Central Office. At why Central Office failed to bill us for four hundred thousand dollars, which is why Central Office failed to notify the town accountant that he had to accrue seven hundred thousand dollars worth of stuff that added to all these problems that we have because Central Office for the longest time had complete lack of transparency. And for the record, before I get yelled at tomorrow in emails, the current administration at Central Office is doing one hell of a job.
There.
All right? But the sins of the past have caught up, and if we continue to slash and cut and die of a thousand cuts here at the town side, we're gonna end up in the same spot.
Well, and definitely this year, we took a bigger hit, I think, on insurance than we thought we might too. So it was close to a twenty percent increase on insurance costs, which we weren't, we knew it would be up, but I don't know that we were aiming that amount.
Pretty much took out any flexibility that we have on our, on our side. Because we pay both the insurance costs for the town and the Norris School employees.
And the school too, yeah.
And ten to twelve percent on our retirement account for, again, decades ago when this started, and nobody wanted to pay the contribution limits. The next generation will pay for that and pay for that.
Yeah, so anyway. Okay, so what do we need to do for a vote for you tonight, Scott? Tell us what you need.
I would vote on this budget, the four percent budget, and then vote on another budget adding just the eight ninety-seven amount for the override. So we would have both the override amount and the non-override amount and the option number one in the article.
Okay. John, wanna make a motion?
So the override budget is twenty-four million, four twenty-four, four fifty-seven point nine nine.
Okay.
And then the budget without the override is twenty-three million, five twenty-seven, three eighty-eight point nine nine. But that, but hold on, but that's not the, that's not the obligation to the taxpayers. Correct, because that twenty-three million includes, it's all revenue sources, right? So state aid, right, so that twenty-three million is not the number going to the, that is the gross number without the offsets.
That includes the Norris offsets?
Well, I'm thinking.
For the, for the budget?
Yeah, motor vehicle excise, interest penalties, payment lieu taxes, meals tax, room tax, can't all those have to get backed out of that number? And then we come up with, this is the raisin appropriate tax number. Correct? This twenty-three million is everything, but that, but of that, that twenty-three million is not the amount that's gonna be divided amongst the household taxpayers in the town of Southampton. Because you're gonna back out all the cherry sheet money, you're gonna back out the Norris offset, you're gonna back out the council on aging.
Right, the.
Do we know what that, do we know what that number is?
Yeah.
Isn't it your budget revenues sheet here?
So through the chair, I think John is exactly right about the budget that we're looking at. That the town's outlay, levy is not the total, but I'd go back to Scott that I believe we have to pass the total budget wherever the revenue is coming from.
So in the past, this. I agree, I just wanted, you print a twenty-three million dollar number out there without any explanation, that's what people think the taxes are gonna be.
Right, so what we've done in the past is, for example.
Tax impact is important, of course.
Okay.
What we would do is, for example, the council on aging. A lot of the grants would be used to fund the positions, but the actual positions costs were never actually put into the budget. So this is reflective of what the actual costs are to operate the council on aging and all the other departments. And then it's minus any of the revenues that we might get, like, for example, like the communications grant, we put in as a cost a hundred seventy-five thousand that we pay to East Hampton every year, and then we put in the revenue side the hundred seventy-five thousand that we're gonna get from the grant. So it balances out, but it does increase the total amount of the budget.
Correct, but I think the form needs to be, here's our total, here's all the money we're gonna spend. And that's the, with the override, that's twenty-four million, four hundred and change. But of that twenty-four, four hundred from other sources, from the state, from all these other pots, it probably drops it down. Because I have a feeling that our general budget last year was like around eleven million plus the school, which is, plus Hampshire, which is like five or six. So the tax limit that we're gonna hit the homeowners on is really seventeen million or eighteen million?
Right, so all the costs that were built in was one point two oh six, five twenty-one.
It can't be, chapter seventy itself is two point, two point one million. That's coming from the state, that's not coming from the property owners in town.
And you've got a total revenue for twenty-six of seventeen million. What is that?
I think if you go to your first page, personal property, real estate, you have a number there of sixteen million, one sixty-six. That's the tax bill number, right, right, so. So the twenty-three, if the, if the override fails, twenty-four if it does pass. But the impact to the taxpayers is either sixteen million, one hundred and sixty-six, or you add the eight hundred to that, and you're talking seventeen million in round numbers.
Right, right, yeah.
But messaging is important. Right?
I nominate John to be chair.
Hold on, Stephen. Go ahead.
No, just am I thinking of this differently?
Well, this is without the override.
Yeah, it's only sixteen million, so you want me to approve sixteen million and not move twenty-three million forward? If I vote twenty-three million, I'm voting twenty-three million on the taxpayers. In the past, we voted on the cumulative amount that is going to go out in tax bills. So here, that's sixteen, one sixty-six.
No, you have to add the.
Yeah, go ahead, Stephen.
Override too.
Can you go a little louder, Stephen, please?
He said you have to add the.
The override, I, I get Scott's point, you have to take the regular annual plus the override. The debt levy is what John is getting at, or not the debt levy, I'm sorry, the total tax levy.
The levy limit isn't the budget.
Scott, Scott, I agree, is adding the override, and that's all on taxpayer. There's not an offset to that.
Is that correct? Right.
So you, somewhere you've got a column of revenue there, the total's up to seventeen million on that other sheet that you gave us.
And that's with the override.
I've got, I've got the math now. So I'll make a motion that we approve a cumulative budget with override of twenty-four million, four twenty-four, four fifty-seven point nine nine, which would have a personal property and real estate tax impact on the community of seventeen million, sixty-three thousand, six hundred and one dollars and sixty-three cents. And if the override was to fail, the total budget would be twenty-three million, five twenty-seven, three eighty-eight point nine nine with sixteen million, one sixty-six, five thirty-two point six three being raised through property taxes. You see it on the first page, Chris?
I'm not sure that we've, I don't recall us voting that way before, John, but I could be wrong. I mean, our whole total budget last year was twenty-one million, and that's what we.
We've never had all the offsets in here.
True.
Which we do now.
We've shown the, yeah, we've shown, we've presented the budget differently.
I like, but total budget and then tax issue.
Yeah, okay. Kinda gotcha, okay, yeah.
Your point may.
Yeah, I understand what John's doing. But is there, is there even that distinction for the override anymore? We've got them combined. What happens if the budget fails? You just don't have a budget, doesn't, it doesn't revert to the four percent budget. Doesn't revert to the sixteen million, it's, you just don't have a budget, period.
No, because the ballot question will be a one, well, what we voted on will be one question, yes or no. Yes, adds the eight ninety-seven to the foundation, no, leaves the eight ninety-seven off, and the foundation passes. I'm using the word foundation, I think you're using contingent, the base budget.
It does, so it still passes even if it's voted down. Because the vote isn't on the override, the vote's on the entire thing.
An affirmative vote passes the override, a negative vote passes the budget without the override.
At town meeting.
At the ballot.
At town meeting.
It would be the same question going both ways.
At town meeting, if the budget article, because it's one article, if that fails, then the budget fails.
Yeah, the whole thing fails at that point.
And if it succeeds, then it goes to the ballot for the additional money for the override, the eight ninety-seven.
Which would only happen if that ballot is a yes.
So it's contingent on, the higher budget is contingent on prop two and a half passing.
Right.
Okay, so that was a very long and convoluted motion there.
Well, again, we're adding all the revenue sources, which is good, it's transparent.
Which is something that we have not usually done and shown.
But if we're gonna do that, we need to call out, here's the, because it also gives credit to the fact that over seven million of this is not coming from taxpayers.
Correct. Between state aid and grants, whatever else.
We pay enough to the state.
No, but I mean, yeah, some of it is, you know, coming in, you know, that way, or grants or whatever else, right, it's true. All right, are we sort of clear on that? I'm getting a little foggy myself, I have to admit, but we understand.
Madam Chair.
The budget of the twenty-three million-ish as the base, plus the eight hundred thousand gives us about a twenty-four million dollar budget per the figures John has cited. So we'll go back and look at his actual figures in our minutes.
Yeah, you can double-check my math.
Be sure we have the math correct, I think so, it looked like it was correct, as I did it myself. So I think we have a motion, Stephen, you want to try and second that motion? Or any discussion?
Regrettably, no, because I think it's unduly limiting. I think it crosses the boundary between policy and communications or operations.
So what would you suggest?
That John's very important point about the tax levy be excised from the motion, but used prominently in the communication around how we got here and what we're asking of the voters.
Well, I guess, Stephen, I'm just saying, it is twenty-three million or twenty-four million, I'm just adding additional definition to the minutes, to the motion, so that it'll be captured for all of eternity in the motion recorded in the minutes.
And I think that that is unduly reliant on forecasts that are outside of our knowledge or control. And so, rather than asking town council for an opinion, I'd rather just give the broader authorization for the total budget and use your excellent reasoning in the communications, because.
But regardless of, hypothetically, the Senate comes in and slashes our cherry sheet money by fifty percent, the assessors' office are not gonna be able to change that line, and the assessors have already certified that's our number. That's how we set the tax rate already.
Right.
Thank you for the upcoming year.
Correct.
Thank you. Stand corrected.
Okay.
So is that a second?
Is that a second then, Stephen?
Yes.
There's only three of us.
Okay, all right, I think we've got it, so let's, let's go ahead and do a roll call vote. All those in favor of the motion as iterated in great detail by the vice chair, go ahead. Roll call, Stephen, all those in favor?
Johnson aye.
Lumber aye.
Fowles aye, okay. Next, does tenants vote on this now or later?
Probably later.
Later. Okay. All right, then we need a motion regarding the override amount?
The ballot question.
Oh, the ballot question itself, okay. Now, what are we?
So do you have the new version?
Okay, so that is the version you've got, right?
But that's the two, that was assuming there was gonna be two articles at town meeting.
Well, there will be.
No, we voted to make it one.
No, but there's, the second article is, is public safety.
I'm with you, I'm with you, I'm with you.
Yeah, there's only two, three point two, and then the eight ninety-seven for the ballot questions.
Right.
Which has to be read out and approved.
Right, so we just have to.
Wait a minute, I'm with you on the public safety, but specifically on the first ballot, all the motions, all the ballot question says is an additional eight ninety-seven oh sixty-nine. And I'm saying, because of what we did, informed it in one question, is that, that's correct? Because all you're asking here, I'll read it, I'm not making a motion, but shall the town of Southampton be allowed to assess an additional eight ninety-seven oh sixty-nine in real estate and personal property taxes for the purposes of supplementing the funding for the operating budget of the Norris Elementary School for the fiscal year beginning July first, two thousand twenty-five?
So that, as the ballot question ties with us having this supplemental language, article language, right? So the question is, now that we've collapsed the eight ninety-seven into a, one article on town meeting, even though we'll show it side by side.
Right, that's the contingent amount, is the eight ninety-seven. So if this fails, it goes back to the original non-contingent amount.
Right.
So this is approving eight hundred ninety-seven thousand, sixty-nine dollars into the tax levy, and then you can build your budget from that.
Okay, so the language from what you understand from, everything we've done tonight with, with changing around the budget article does not affect the language in the ballot question?
No, this is from, this is from Michelle KP Law, so they do this one, the council does the borrowing.
Okay.
But.
But nothing we've
We're only talking about the budget right now, Scott.
Yeah.
Right.
Just, so why was bond counsel on the budget?
They're on the borrowing.
No, no, for the borrowing.
On the borrowing, yeah, they're only on the borrowing. So, just, just to reiterate, so instead of breaking it out with the base budget and then a supplemental article, we got rid of the supplemental article in our town meeting warrant change right now. And that language between the warrant and the town meeting, I'm sorry, and the election has to be the same. Have we, I just, we just want to be sure that we haven't changed anything that messes up the language of the ballot question. Because
So what's the
This is what was approved by bond counsel before
So that's the ballot, that's the ballot question for number two, right? And we approved option one?
Number, oh, sorry, number two, sorry, yeah.
So there's the article, there's the motion. Yep.
This is a sample motion from DLS, is that the one?
Mm-hmm, for a town meeting, right? Keep going down. So that, right there, under either, yeah, under either approach, can you make that a little larger?
Has a choice whether to bundle all contingent appropriations. There's only one contingent appropriation, that's the school, right?
Right. You could, if you wanted to do like a menu item or, you know, the pyramid type of override, you could do that as well, but this is the 897 for the Norris Elementary
The single purpose question override. So the question, as it reads now, John, is what? Read out that question.
It does. Shall the town of Southampton be allowed to assess an additional 897, 069 in real estate personal property taxes for the purposes of supplementing the funding for the operating budget for the Norris Elementary School for the fiscal year? So, yeah.
So it's clear, it's just related to the school?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Seems like it matches.
I'll make a motion to approve ballot question number one. Shall the town, which shall read, shall the town of Southampton be allowed to assess an additional 897,069 in real estate and personal property taxes for the purposes of supplementing the funding for the operating budget for the Norris Elementary School for the fiscal year beginning July 1st, 2025? Yes or no?
Okay, do we have a second, Stephen?
Second.
All right, any discussion on that? If not, we'll do a roll call vote, all those in favor? Stephen?
Johnson, aye.
Lumber, aye.
Foul's aye, okay, motion passed.
Make a motion to approve ballot question number two. Shall the town of Southampton be allowed to exempt from the provisions of Proposition 2 and 1/2, so-called, the amounts required to pay for the bonds to be issued for engineering, architectural services, to build a public safety building, and all costs incidental and related thereto, including an owner's project manager? Yes or no?
Second.
All right, any discussion on that one?
And just for the record, because it's not here, this is deliberately written not to state the dollar amount.
Not allowed by law, from what we've been told.
But that's generally the question, why isn't the number there?
Correct, yeah, for any, any of the purchases, we're not allowed to put in
We're not allowed to put a specific number.
Put in a dollar amount. So this is the, this is actually the 3.2 million that was voted on at, at special town meeting, but we are not
John, why, why is that? Do you know?
I have it the faintest idea.
It's a law that exists.
It doesn't, because you have to know what happened at town meeting.
Yeah.
Well, I, I mean, I asked bond counsel, and the reasoning is that the exact amount won't be determined until the actual borrowing and the interest rate is, so.
But I would think you could say the principal to be no greater than 3.2.
Good.
But
Got to call your legislature. It's, yeah, NBL.
At this point, yeah, it's the way it is. And we, we did it, when we purchased the land in Zero College, there was nothing in the ballot question for land purchase and buildings, you know, these kind of borrowings and stuff, that the actual amount is actually not in the ballot question in itself. So it requires an educational campaign to kind of accompany the whole thing, so.
Yep.
All right, I'll second that, if I don't remember, Stephen did, but I'll second it. Any other thoughts other than that? We will take a vote, roll call, all those in favor?
Johnson, aye.
Lumber, aye.
Foul's aye. Okay, motion passed. So we will have two ballot questions for the annual town election. Okay.
Hey, Reggie, welcome to Massachusetts. Probably more attorneys here than anywhere but New York State, I guess.
Okay, next up, I think that takes care of basically special town meeting, budget, and ballot questions, right? We're done with all that? And you're working on, just for public's knowledge, you're working on this whole budget book, some of it is already up online, am I correct?
Yeah, so the budget book unfortunately won't be as robust as I had originally planned with specifics for each department, but it is going to have all the line items from each budget, all the personnel costs, all of the hourly rates, what it's used for, so it's not going to just be
Right.
A line for everything.
And that, I believe, is under, under government, and just, it's a separate page, whatever, fiscal 26 budget, I believe, right?
Right.
Yeah, it's not tied to select page or
Nope.
Or the town administrator page, it's a page by itself. So just, if you go in and just hit the headings up top for government, and you'll see a drop down for 26 budget. Okay. All right, land planning update, Scott?
So we have the meeting today with Dotson and Flinker and PVPC, it was, it was a pretty, it was a pretty good meeting, a lot of interesting conversations, so they are going to be taking the input that the internal committee gave them as well, and putting together a presentation for May 10th, which will be at Norris School Saturday morning, I think it's 10 o'clock, so it'll be between 10 and 12. So they're going to make several recommendations as well as some alternatives, and this is just another chance for the public to go in, see the plans, see the designs, give some more input, so it's a constantly evolving process, and until really, until the fall, where we're going to have a finalized plan.
And this incorporates the results of the survey that they had done?
Mm-hmm, yep.
Do we have a sense of how, how much the survey was responded to, or not?
We do, I think it was 174 responses, I have the exact number.
It's fairly, fairly low amount, unfortunately. But at least we'll have another chance to get other input, so.
Was that the only date looked at?
Madam Chair, I would, I would second that strongly. We had reasonable input from the community, but I think it was largely motivated by the workshop, and so I'd really like to promote the next workshop, where people can see that their input is represented in the design concepts, and there will be several, so just like to put that out there. I think you mentioned the date.
Yeah, yeah, I don't know in terms
Saturday?
May 10th The only date that was selected, May 17th.
At 10 a.m. at Norris School.
Right. What were you saying, Tammy?
I was just curious, is the May 10th being, there's a road race in town going on, there's games going on, there's other things happening?
Happening, as we enter spring, that's going to be the, the case. I mean, May 3rd is, is a huge, huge Saturday as well, with the Little League and then the 250th events as well. And then the 17th is a giant spring into Southampton, so I'm thinking the, the 10th is probably the, the date that they found that they could make this happen. We'll just get the word out, see if we can get more people to come.
That was taken into account by the committee.
Yeah, okay, go ahead, Scott, you want to?
Yep, so I don't, 178 had answered, it's, it's a very, I'm sure we're going to be posting this online soon, but it's the results, it's 28 pages of pretty dense graphs. So it, it's, one thing important to me, it looks like it's going to be the name Southampton Commons. So a little bit unexcited about that, but Kyle will be, he'll be, we'll be putting this on the page as soon as we get word from PVPC that it can be distributed publicly.
Okay, and again, this is under the special projects page on the website for land use planning, right?
Right.
Okay.
So Southampton Commons, sounds like we're moving forward with housing. Because if it's a big open field with two buildings on it
Yeah.
I don't know that the name really works, so maybe we'll just take it under consideration.
Yeah, well, it's, it's, it's the, the, the best choice for the moment, but not necessarily the definitive choice, can we say that?
I think it's better than Zero College, but I wouldn't
I won't disagree with that, but, all right.
Not, not my favorite name, so.
All right. Okay, anything else on that? So that's moving forward, okay, very good. 250th, I talked about that a bit, but Lucy, you want to just show these, just to let people know, we do have some merchandise, folks, could you do my little sales pitch? So online, there's an online order form, or contact Lucy at Town Clerk. Yeah, we've got our baseball cap is in, we've got t-shirts now, so you can just kind of Yeah, just, well, just
Pull it to that camera up there.
Yeah, they're tied up. So there's a, a red one and a blue one that have got the 250 on the pocket, and then the full color ones, so the, the full color one and the hat. So the range is 15, 20, and $25. So contact Lucy if you want them, there's other things coming in, we've got pint glasses, a boat bag, stemless wine glasses, and coffee, coffee mugs, pottery coffee mugs, well, first of all, sort of a, more of a metal camping mug
Yeah, camping.
That will have the 250th logo on it, and those will be in, hopefully within the next 10 days or so.
And ornaments, the glass ornament.
And there's a glass ornament as well, with the 250th logo on it. And then the Women's Club is selling their traditional sort of pottery coffee mug, and that is their fundraiser, and the proceeds for that go to the scholarship fund for the Women's Club that they raised to donate scholarships to, and then the proceeds for this keep on going for additional activities for the 250th celebration all year long. And while I have that, I will mention that we just, we had put in a request to East Hampton Savings Bank to maybe help us out with some funding toward the 250th celebrations, and we just received word that East Hampton Savings Bank granted us $1,100 toward the celebration, and we will put that toward the two concerts that are coming up, one in June and one in August.
Can I just mention that at the events that are coming up, the merchandise will be there to be bought, if people want to buy stuff there.
To be bought, and if we don't have the right size or something, it can be ordered
The order forms.
Yeah, very good. And we'll be there also for the, the Drug Take Back Day on August, sorry, on April 26th. We'll have the merchandise there too, so. We'll put in a plug for Drug Takeout, Take, Takeout, Take, I wish it was, I maybe need Takeout, Drug Take Back Day. 10 to 2, all right, perfect, thanks, yeah. All right, thanks, Lucy, all right. Okay, let's keep on going.
Madam, Madam Chair?
Yes, ma'am.
There's one more big 250th event that's going to be happening.
250th event.
Yes, but the big one, the big celebrate Southampton is August 16th, from 11:30 to 4 p.m. We have three food trucks, free popsicles, all kinds of kids' activities happening. There will be a, there will be a memory hour at the church from 10 to 11 to start that off, but we have a train coming in that is our big push along with all the kids' stuff that we're doing this year, so. And again, thanks to East Hampton Savings Bank, Bank ESB, for their help with that.
Okay, all right. Any other business that can't wait until our next meeting on April 29? Not aware of anything offhand. We have two sets of minutes to approve, first of all?
Motion to approve the minutes of March 4th and March 11th.
Okay, I'll do a second on that, but there's one correction I would like to make on the minutes for March 4th, under Article 1, the Public Safety Building Planning Bond. This says here, and this is on page 2, that the amount of the, the debt exclusion will be used for the public safety building feasibility study, that is not true, it's for the public safety, architecture, engineering costs, and OPM. So if you make that correction on the minutes. So with that correction, any corrections from you, Stephen, or are you okay?
Second. That was, that was excellent.
Okay, then let's have a motion to approve both minutes with the one correction on March 4th minutes. Roll call, please, all those in favor?
I thought you moved it, but I will.
Lumber, aye.
All right, foul's aye. Did I hear, did I hear Stephen? Yeah, okay, I think I heard
Yes.
All right, very good, thank you.
Yes.
Okay, got it. And then one PRF, Scott, you want to talk about this, the health agent position?
Mm-hmm, so Jerry is retiring on April 30th. We have been working with the Board of Health to revise the job description, I met with them again last night, so they are still, they're still making some basic changes. The one thing that they voted on and they agreed to move forward with is changing from health director to health agent. The other thing is making sure that we expand the minimum certifications and qualifications for the person to ensure that they can do all the wide breadth of required
Inspection service.
Inspections. So this is just the, not the job description, so that's still being worked on, although it'd be, I don't expect it to be that different from the 2017 version, so we're probably going to revert back to that one, but this is just to allow it to be advertised officially and to move forward with interviewing candidates. We are still working on the job description, but hopefully by the next meeting that will be done, but it shouldn't preclude us from moving forward with advertising or interviewing people.
But it still needs to go to PQB, right?
It does.
It's on Thursday night's agenda.
Thursday night?
Assuming there could be a final product, yeah.
Okay, all right, so this is, at least what's in the works, nothing that we need to act on right now and then, we don't need to
Uh, just the posting.
Just the posting on that. And the posting would just be this front, front page, is that all that we do, posting?
Right.
Why is it, why is the select board approving the posting?
I don't know.
Eventually they have to with the RFP, yeah.
Usually with the PRF.
So the appointing authority would do the initial documents, so, maybe something's changed, but I would think that's the Board of Health. They send it to PPP, it gets, make sure it's all in alignment there, it gets signed off there, and then it comes down to here, but the select board's not approving the posting, they're approving the PC, for the PCR.
Right, well, it was scheduled for last week, but the, there wasn't a quorum for the PQB.
I got you.
So we just need to approve the
The posting.
The posting.
Yes.
So we don't have the PRF itself right now? The, the form
Right, without the form, you can't post.
Yeah, there's a form, the PRF form we don't have.
Should be in there.
There is, I don't have it in my pocket. Oh, okay.
There it is. Okay, so, yeah, so it may not have, okay.
It didn't come in my pocket, okay.
Or maybe I have it right here.
Right, but if, had they met last week, this would be appropriate now, but
Yeah. So would we, would we approve it contingent upon, you could be signing at the end of this week? Or you want to wait? I mean, I think they're trying to, with Jerry retiring on the 30th, and I think they're trying not to have too long a gap, probably.
If there's extenuating circumstances that can get noted for the record, then I would support it, but if we just
I know.
Maybe you just made the point there, Chris.
We're backwards in the process, normally it comes to PQB first before us, but my, my assumption would be that we've got only two weeks before the current person retires, and they'd rather get this out sooner rather than later to post it, and then going through the full job description, they're still going to go through all that with, with PQB if they meet on Thursday or whatever their meeting is.
Yeah.
So I would like to request that we allow this posting to happen sooner rather than later, if we don't have any objection to that.
That's a motion, I'll second.
All right. Stephen, any comments, thoughts?
I'm totally inspired of this, we need to attend to the process, but we need to get this critical position filled, if we can.
Okay, all right. Yeah, I think we, you know, to hopefully minimize any gaps in, in being able to do this
Yes.